Okay, we'll now call the city council regular meeting to order February thirteenth, six P. M. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Invocation will be given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for your guidance and for your Holy Spirit here, Lord, to help us make the right decisions for our city. Lord, I'm asking to be with all of our families and friends and our, even our businesses and those in our town. And, Lord, help us to prosper and to do your absolute will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, here. Councilmember McCure, here. Councilmember Taylor, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mayor Anderson, here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. First up, we have item number four. This will be the Ridge Area ARC scarf bomb campaign. Here yet again. We always look forward to seeing them every year.
It's a very fast year. I'm Donna Sherlocke with Ridge Area ARC, and March is coming up quickly. March is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and we do something really fun and creative to bring awareness to our fabulous consumers. We tie scarves around the lampposts on the mall. They stay up for the month of March. They have tags on them encouraging people to take them, wear them, take a selfie, tag us in it. It's just a great way to promote and just make sure that, that our individuals are recognized. We do it through the entire month of March, and then if there are any scarves left over, they're all collected by March thirty-first. So we're asking for preparation to do that once again.
Okay. Have any questions for Donna?
I do. Ms. Donna, how many scars did you put out last year?
Oh, probably twenty, twenty-five.
And how many did you collect?
How many? We didn't take any back. They were all taken.
They're usually gone pretty quick.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Donna? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve B. Four for the Ridge Area A. R. C. scarf bomb.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Donna, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, we have requests for the city to fund scholarship for Miss Avon Park pageant. Don't see Carrie. We have her on Zoom.
No, sir.
Does she indicate whether or not she would be?
She told me she would be here.
Okay. Well, let's put that off for now and see if maybe she shows up. All right. Item number six, we have the Alina McWhite park lighting. If you will, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Herbert Sykes. I am the minister of the Carolina Avenue Church of Christ, also the director of Avon Park Community Development Corporation.
Yes, sir.
In partnership, Mr. Gerald Snells and I were discussing the lighting of the park area there. Doesn't know if the county, the council is familiar with all that has happened there. Since I've been here for the past fifteen years, we have encountered seven shootings in that area where the city have the park playground area. Four of those resulted in deaths, and one resulted with a young child and an adult being shot in the park. One of the critical areas there, just about three weeks ago or so, maybe a month, a young man was killed right, right on the grounds by a congregation right behind the church. Church cameras was able to capture it and assist police as well as death that happened back last year. The young man was shot in the front door by a congregation, and the car went across the road into his grandmother's yard, and he passed away. And I think one of the critical things is that the county put up a surveillance tower there on the front street and drove those who, criminal elements more into darker areas, which is where my congregation is, on Fred Connors and Carolina Avenue. And we wanted to request the city as if there's a way to increase the lighting. And I, I just feel that the lighting will assist in causing people not to want to come in and use the darkness to do whatever it is they do in that area. And like I said, I've been there fifteen years, and it's just continued. Situation has continued, so I'm asking for help from the, the city council to address this matter. And hopefully also not as well as put up lighting, but assist maybe of putting up a community camera. Police come in the area, county police come in the area, and they're often asking who has cameras. Well, we recently put up cameras because we had a couple of brickings in, in the church there to try to curtail that, and we've been pretty successful in having a sign that people know that facility is under camera watch. So whatever the council can do to help mitigate the issues that are going on in that section there. We have a lot of kids that use the park to play. It's a wonderful area, but when you get that criminal element encroaching there, it makes it where no one can enjoy it. And so I'm seeking any help that you might be able to provide. And I've, I made the request is lighting for that street, Fred Connor Street.
Sir, have you been there in the last week or so at night to see the lights?
Yes.
Okay. Did the, you want more light than what is there currently as of about a week or two ago?
Just a little bit more light.
Okay. In, in the park itself, or more towards the streets?
More towards the street.
Okay.
More towards the street.
Would you say that streetlights would be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mark, we had discussed that the, all the lights there are currently functional. You heard the request that?
I did, and I'd like to bring some up because I brought up the Jerry. This latest crime turns out did not happen on city property. However, I received a call from an attorney trying to possibly be retained from family, so I don't know if we want to talk about this, but that'd be Jerry's call on that.
Yeah, if it's some possibility of litigation, and they're seeking an attorney, trying to get information from the city and so on, then it's probably best that we wait until that's resolved, or we get, you know, the insurance company to, to say, you know, go ahead and deal with that issue if you like.
Okay.
Because I, you know, the litigation can, you know, use just about everything you say in, in an odd way.
Sure.
So.
Are you saying we shouldn't bother putting any lights up in the meantime that may save a life in the future?
That's your choice, but I'm just simply saying, it's my, my recommendation that if there's, if there's an issue with low light out there, there might be low light even if it didn't have any effect on this particular case, it may be something that's, you know, somebody tries to bring into the case. I wouldn't act on it immediately, but let me just simply also say that, you know, sovereign immunity for the city is a strange thing. It's, you know, if you don't put up a, a stop sign or a stoplight, people can't allege that you, you know, that necessarily that you're, that you're, it's negligent because it's a bad intersection. But once you put up the stop sign, if, if, if something grows over it and covers it, now you're liable because you put the stop sign there and you're responsible for everything that happens. The same thing goes with lights. You're going to put up lights, you're going to need to, you know, maintain them. And as I understand, these, these things are getting shot out regularly by guns.
Are you also talking about the possibility of putting up a city light?
I, I'm not.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, does that affect what your comment was?
Well, yeah.
If we ask Duke Energy to put a city light up there, that we, we have to wait till this location?
Well, unless they're going to be responsible for the light, maintain the light.
Duke Energy puts up streetlights.
Right.
Very important distinction.
I understand it.
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking about putting up streetlight, which was actually the, the heart of the request he was making was the streetlights. I don't know how many street poles are there that you could put lights on. I would anticipate it's probably not a high number unless for some reason they go all the way around the park. But what they're getting at is that, number one, the park is closed at dusk, so there should be no one there after dark. There shouldn't even be any need for lights there because there shouldn't be anybody there. Number two, if we want to put up more streetlights on the street, obviously we can. We should know roughly what that price would be. So I don't know if maybe a staff member wants to count how many poles are out there that even could take a, a light, and we would at least know what we would be in for. But as far as lights?
I've been at that location, Mayor, and actually, the only one necessary would be the one almost right across the street from where the people are now sitting in the dark. And there's a light and a camera by the church, and then there's a whole vacant lot, which is basically the whole active piece of a property there.
Sure.
If we just put one city light there, which is really no cost to the city, they come in, they put it, we just pay the monthly fee like we do the rest of the other city.
A street light, not a city light.
Okay, I'm sorry. We put a street light there, that Duke Energy puts up, it's no cost to us except for monthly fee, and that street light will put sufficient amount of light, light, at least for now, to help the location where the people are sitting underneath the, the park inside there on tables and that. So I think that the fact that it probably would take a, a month or three months to get a city light, I think we should at least move forward with that motion to put a city light at that location.
Well.
Or ask Duke to go out to the engineering and check it out.
Yeah, I would just ask for a, a number of poles, how many that we can even put up out there, and then just basically wait to see how this plays out.
When they put them in there, they're, they're responsible for the maintenance. We just simply tell them when they're not working and so on.
Yeah, yeah. They, they don't charge you anything to put them in. They put them in, turn them on, and they send us a monthly bill, which is, I don't know, ten, fifteen dollars a month for light.
About twenty-five.
Twenty-five bucks a light. If the light burns out, you call up Duke, they come out and replace it. If somebody was to throw a rock or knock it out, do the same thing, call Duke. And I imagine that if it kept happening, Duke, I'm sure has a way of protecting their light bulbs to make sure that kids don't throw rocks and knock them out every other month. But at the same time, the responsibility is not on the city, it's on Duke Energy. And so all we have to do is to call the engineering department of Duke and say, would you come out and access this location, see about putting a light right here in the middle of this property, this vacant lot, which will shine on towards that part. And like I said, it takes one to three months for the engineering costs and development plan it, and at least we'd have something done. And I think we'll all start that process now.
I have no problem with that, sir. That scenario.
Just to be clear, are you talking about, when you say the lot, are you talking about the church property here where the gentleman was talking about, the light there?
The lot is just to the south of the church property.
But you're not putting it on the?
Right across the street from the, the park itself where the overhang is, and there's chairs there, and then there's tables there where, you know, where people in the daytime would probably have lunch, but at nighttime they're sitting there in the darkness. And, and we all know you put twenty, thirty people there in the darkness, that there's a possibility of something going on. That's the reason why they keep knocking out the city lights.
Wait a minute. Let me, let me get this.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to get this straight. So we're not talking about putting it on private property or city property. We're talking about going on there right away, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the light's going to shine into the city park or to this, what this gentleman was talking about?
It'll shine on the street, but it'll also go over to the park itself.
But the park is closed. It, yeah, so somebody, somebody shouldn't be there at night anyway.
Well, whether they are or not, I mean, it still needs lighting.
Um, yeah. Whether the park is closed or whether, I mean, if it's night and the park is closed, shouldn't it still be lit up?
I think so.
I mean, you go to Donison Park and you go right here on, on, on Main Street here.
That's why we're going to get a count of all the poles, so we can see how many we need to put up. Because everybody agrees that we need more lighting on the street. So we'll get a count, and whenever we get that, then we'll proceed. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I apologize that I am late with a capital L. A. T. E., but.
But your name is Gerald Snell, and you reside at?
Somewhere on Washington Street. No, three twenty East Washington Street, Avon Park, Florida.
What can I do for you?
Uh, I suppose I see where I was supposed to speak, but anyway, I just want to basically give you a rundown of what I've encountered in the past few days after the killing of the young man. Spoke with neighbors in the area, some, you know, around the Alina McWhite about lighting, and some of them are elderly people, and most of them are. You know, and they feel as though, they say, well, Gerald, if it's nothing, I know better, but I'm just speaking what they say. If it's past Cornell, they don't care. And I'm like, yes, they do. There is something we can get done, and there is something that will get done. It's like, well, the shooting was just like it was in my house. It, it was just so close. And I can relate to that because I heard every gunshot when the young man was murdered. It, it was just that loud, you know, the, it was just so still that time of night that you could actually hear it, you know. And Jim and I rode the area. It's so dark down there. Even if you get out, you cannot even see your hand in front of you. I'm, I'm serious. It's just that dark.
On the street or?
The street in front of the park, yeah. And we, we barely, my, I have the, whatever kind of lights on the car, and the only way we could see was the lights kind of, and these people were sitting over in the pitch dark in the park. It, it was, it was just that dark. We could barely see them. And I Googled several sites that sells light covers and different things, bullet resistant to lights. I know they may vandalize, tear out, shoot out or whatever, but we're talking about if we can at least save a human life, it's worth it. And on, on page eighty-nine of the South Side CRA plan provides for lights, lighting, cameras, and other public safety elements for the area. So that means, and I was on, I, I was pretty much sure, but I called another friend and another CRA and asked them what that meant. They say, it's just like what it says. You can, your CRA can pay for lighting, cameras, even a officer for the area. If it's in your plan, like I think I heard you say, Mayor, some time ago, if it's in your plan, you can do it. If not, you can change your plan and put it in your plan, you can do it.
As long as Jerry says it's okay.
And I would like to thank each one of you all are concerned about the city as a whole, not just about a particular area. I really do honestly believe that each one of you that is sitting up there tonight really care about the city as a whole. And I shared with the lady in my closing, she was saying, well, I said, well, do you remember the hurricane some years ago? She was like, yeah. I was like, okay. And so she said, well, yeah, you, you brought ice in up there. You bought a pallet of ice. I said, okay, I'm gonna save that little nugget for later. She said, there was a man on a motorcycle that came up there and helped give out ice. I say, yeah. I say, that's one of the people you say that probably don't care. She said, well, really? I said, that's Mr. Bernard that came and helped give out ice. I say, and the other person you didn't see who made the ice possible was our mayor. He wasn't our mayor at the time. He was just a member. So they do care. I feel as though that you all do care. It's time for us to do something. If it, being in the mortuary business, I hate seeing parents having to bury a child when there's something that we can do about it. If it falls back and y'all want the CRA to take it up, it's within our plan. We can. And as chairman, I believe we will. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you, Gerald.
Jerry, as far as the ongoing cost of a streetlight, you know, there's a monthly fee associated with it. Is that something that a CRA could actually pay for on a yearly basis?
No, it's used for bricks and mortar. If there are things that are solid and continuing like fees, but it's not, I mean, it may not be possible to get that worked into it, but just, you know, you're kind of opening a door there.
Sure. Yeah, I, I just had never asked the question before, so I didn't know.
I've never looked at it, so.
Yeah. Well, the only, the only reason why I even brought it up is just the fact that Mr. Snell brought up the officer for the area. So obviously, if it's an officer, it's going to be a paid position. It's going to be ongoing cost. I just never heard of that sort of an ongoing cost before in, in any regard. Like you said, it was only bricks and mortar in, in the past, and so I'm curious about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see how that can happen, but, but, but I'm not gonna say absolutely not. I will have to check and see.
Okay. Might be worth looking at. All right. So we are going to get a count of the poles around there and see how many we can add to the street, and when we do, we will bring it back up at some point in the future. And at this point in time, all the lights at the park are currently working, so everything is as normal. We're just looking at adding additional, so.
So, Mayor, is there a timeframe we're going to try to make this happen?
Uh, well, if you listen to what I just said, we're going to get a count, and then we're going to be in the future. I can't say if it's going to be tomorrow or next week or whatever.
It's up to Duke.
You can ask them.
I got to send engineer out and check everything.
Sometimes Duke Energy takes quite a bit of time to come out and do anything. I don't, I don't know why they do, but they do.
They're on their own schedule.
Because they can.
Only thing worse than that is the CSX, but we're not going to go there.
That's true, too.
Anyhow, item number seven, we have the minutes from January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion. A second. Is there any questions or changes?
No.
Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. All right, I see Jameson here, so we'll have item number eight. This will be the Kimley Horn Associates IPO number sixteen, for water main replacement and treatment plant improvements.
So you have before you the individual project for Kimley Horn and Associates for the water main replacement grant. We initially was brought before you, and the engineering costs were budgeted at ninety-six thousand, and the construction costs were budgeted at five hundred and twenty-five thousand. But after discussions with Jameson, we feel like that was under budgeted.
Okay.
And Jameson is here if you have any questions, and he can give you a little more in-depth information.
Okay. Jameson, if you would come to the podium, please.
Good evening. I'm Jameson Toddrow with Kimley Horn. Yeah, when we first got selected for the R. I. P., and I looked at the grant funds, I initially brought up my initial gut feel that it didn't look like there was enough budget for this project, enough grant, you know, grant budget to fund, I mean, the design and the construction. Recently, we've reached out to a couple, let's say, electricians and contractors on what cost for the project, and just with the three projects that we gave the design fees for, it, it looks like it might be short, let's just say, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars in that range. Just with, and that's caught, talking to contractors and people that might be working on the projects.
So of course, it could be much more than that after all that information comes back.
Sorry, say that again.
It could be much more than that after all the information comes back, yeah.
It could, but just these preliminary, you know, opinion of the probable cost, so I'm just reaching out to contractors and also looking at similar projects that we've done in the past. It looks like it's definitely under budget. Now, what could have happened? You know, the estimates were done probably two, at least two years ago for the grant, and there could have been more components that got added after the fact. You know, when we went out to the site with Rick Reed and gone over the project details, because I know like in the grant and the R. I. P., it just says, replacement of chlorine skid system. It, it makes it seem like it's small, but when we went out to the site and talked to Rick at that time, there were a lot more improvements that were needed. So that's why I think too, our fees are a little bit more because of that. So I think there's a, just a combination of things of why I think the, the grant funds were on the low side.
Okay. So it leaves us in a situation of being short on the grant. So this is a D. E. O. grant, right? So this is something that comes around every year. So in your opinion, would it be better to try and request more funds next year, or would it be better to try and slim the project down to fit, or which?
Well, I think I had a little bit of conversation, I think, with Mark, and, I mean, these are projects that the city, I mean, desires to, you know, move forward with, and a lot of it's like aging infrastructure. I mean, you're going to have to do it sooner than later. And if you just put it on the back burner, you, you might have to end up paying more in the future.
Right.
And I, I think a thought that we had is that you move forward, you do the design of the, the projects, and then, you know, go out to bid, see what the bids really come back with. And then at that time, you could evaluate, okay, we're a hundred thousand over, we're two hundred thousand. Do we want to remove any of these projects at that time? But at least you'll have the design ready so that when you get the funds or, or more grant money in the future, I mean, you have that ready to go.
Is it possible that this design would need to change in the future? In the near future, meaning obviously eventually the answer has to be yes, but in the near future. In other words, if we do the design now, and for whatever reason, don't get the grant funds next year, and now we're talking about three, four, five years down the road, would it, would that all be for nothing, or would that design still be adequate?
I think that the design would be adequate. Yeah, I don't see that changing in the future.
Okay.
So we can use some of the funds for the design now and have it ready for another grant later this year?
That's what you're telling us, right?
Right.
That we can use the grant money for the design itself that would be funded?
Yeah, and the construction too. We, we will have to see, though, because it does clearly say in the grant work plan that ninety-six thousand was in there for design.
Okay.
And since we're, let's say, at one forty-six, if we're able to move some funds from construction to cover the design, or does the city have to pay that difference? That's something we might have to, you know, check.
Okay.
Check on.
So obviously, we would probably want to know that before we made a decision.
Yeah, because we hate to lose the money a hundred percent, but if we can use some of it, or part of it, then we need to look into that option, so.
Okay. And the grant that we applied for, this was for this specific project. This couldn't be shifted over to another infrastructure project that?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's for this specific project, and this project actually included some even additional projects that we weren't including in this.
Okay. And as the D. E. O. stated, they're not getting any more funds?
Correct.
Right. Okay. So as far as timeline goes, when, what is our deadline to make this decision?
Let's see, we have a, we have a meeting with D. E. O. Was it in the next week or two? Next Tuesday? So we can ask the question if we can look to real, reallocate some of the construction funds to, to cover the design of all three projects that we have shown here, or would the city have to pay the difference, you know, from what show?
And then we could make a decision after that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that does seem at this point like the best way to go. I would just ask the staff, do you guys agree with that, or do you think we should do something different?
Can I ask Jameson one thing?
Yes.
More on that. Let's say it covers your, it's eighty thousand dollars more than was, it was under budgeted, right?
Uh-huh.
So what we would have left, taking eighty out, I think it's the five twenty-five? So would, would we still be able to do some of the projects that we need to get done with that money instead of giving them the money back? Or, I mean, what would be your opinion? Should we get done? If they allow to do the eighty, should we take the rest of that and use that towards getting done what we can get done now with the money? Because we never know with grants whether we're going to get them or not.
Yeah, I mean, you definitely want to use all of the grant money that they, that they're providing. And actually, I was just, just thinking of something different, too, because we kind of already know we're going to be short, though, on the construction. But, but anyways, we're trying to get grant money to cover everything, you know, design and construction. I feel like it could definitely cover. I mean, we're breaking this project, so when we met with Rick and the city, this was, you know, one big project, but within this project really contains three projects. There's a A. C. Water Main Replacement, there's the chlorine system improvements, and then there's a chlorine, or sorry, the control panel and SCADA modifications. So those are three projects, and we know that one of the projects, it's around, let's say, I mean, two of the projects are around a hundred fifty thousand each is what we're expecting. And the A. C. Water Main Replacement is expecting to be, let's just say, three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. So, so I feel like we could definitely pick, you know, certain amounts, certain projects, you know, one or two of them to fit within that grant money. Now, is that going to be an issue with the D. E. O.? That's something we're going to have to ask because the grant was for, really, there's four different aspects of the project.
That was going to be my question, is if we had to do everything on the punch list
Right.
to keep the money.
We did already bring this up, at least with one of the projects, that talked about directional bore. Talking to Rick and staff, they, they didn't really want to go that route anymore. And so we brought that up to D. E. O., and they mentioned that you would have to do an amendment to the grant and explain why, which we were going to basically explain, we don't think there's enough funds, you know, available to cover.
Okay.
Is it possible for them to revoke the grant if we give them that type of letter?
I'm not sure if they would take, yeah, take, take away the grant money, but we definitely want to use it.
Anything's possible, obviously.
Yeah. I mean, we definitely want to try to use the grant money, but these projects are all. Yeah, I mean, we definitely want to try to use the grant money, but these projects are all, you know, the city desires to do all these projects. Like, they are important, like the control panel, I think there's a temporary control panel right now at one of the treatment plants, so we know that needs to get done. There's these chlorine improvements are important at at the treatment plant. And then AC water main replacement, I mean, there's little three-inch water mains, and so you're really technically not getting fire protection. So being able to replace those lines with six-inch water main, you meet fire flow if something were to, you know, if fire were to happen, there would at least be fire flow available now to help with that. So that's why these all are, I mean, they're all important projects, so hopefully the city will consider to move forward.
So I guess the questions for DEO would be, can we, you know, use more of the construction cost for the engineering?
Correct.
And design, and then also can we cut out one or more of the individual sub-projects?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And once we know that information, then we would also be looking to you guys to give us, if it's possible to cut things out, we would be looking for you guys to give us a, you know, one to five, what is the most important?
Right.
And go from there.
Sure.
So, I guess we would reconvene this at our next meeting, probably? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Was there any more questions for Jameson for here?
No.
All right. Item number nine, we have the ballpark maintenance proposal. Mark, you wanna give us an overview there?
Sure. Not all bad news tonight, but looking for money. River Greens, who's been taking care of the ball fields for the city for years, came to me several months ago and asking to, they upped their fees. So, of course, I went looking for the contractor, there's none, I couldn't find an RFP ever went out. Couldn't find anything, I asked them for what they had, and they brought me a proposal that they had sent to the city, and the city, as far as I can see, just went with it, which was, you know, well over what they could have, they had to go out the RFP, but it is what it is. So I had the purchasing agent put together and put out an RFP, the first one that went out, nobody put in. We had called all the companies that we know that could do this in this area and outside the county, and none of them wanted to deal with the irrigation part of it. So when we put it back out, River Greens put back in, but you'll see they came in at eighty-four thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars. We have budgeted in the, in our budget, because that's what's been in there year after year with the River Greens doing, at forty-two thousand. So we're requesting, for the remainder of the year, it'd be thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars that we'd have to take out of general fund, falls under Parks and Recreation. It's something we really can't do ourselves unless we want to spend a few hundred thousand dollars on the correct machinery that takes care of this type of grass and everything else. And David Roberts said we'd have to probably get, not only get somebody trained, but one or two people additional. So I think cost-effective is to allow them to do it, it's a lot more money, but, you know, we went about, prices went up from, I think that was twenty fifteen I put in here, that when that, they gave that proposal, and the city's been using them ever since, so. What we're asking for, our our recommendation is to go with them, and and you increased the budget by thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars to cover the rest of this year.
So were we actually paying them the forty-two thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so they just were accepting it and?
Well, there was a few months ago, they weren't really getting things done.
I see.
Not really their fault, but, I mean, that was to the point, it was probably costing them money to get their machinery and get their people out. And some of our ball fields were, we got them back up, actually, I got a kudo sent to me from the youth ball out there, and which was nice, usually they complain about something, but said that the ball fields are looking great, thanks to our guys and River Greens getting out there.
And this is for how many ball fields?
Well, they take care of Durham Martin, they take care of the girls softball, and they take care of MLK football field over there.
This is all of our actual usable, quote-unquote, fields?
Yes, correct.
Got it.
Durham Martin, the MLK field, and where, which other ones?
And Ducey Lurkman.
Lucy Dirk.
Dirkman, thank you.
The main one up there.
Does anybody use that?
Actually, the youth league's been using it for some practice, and someone called the other day wanting to use it for something. Actually, we got, and I think the mayor got me about getting somebody a key to turn the lights on over there.
Yeah, it was a softball league.
And really, I mean, whether they use it or not, we gotta keep it up. I can tell you, when I got here, it looked like a third world country over there, it was pretty bad, but we've put some money into it this year, getting the fence fixed. Things that liability, somebody get hurt on, but they have been using it.
Yeah, I know that we used to maintain those fields ourself, and we had constant issues. This was, you know, obviously before two thousand fifteen, but we had constant issues with, you know, staff running over things they're not supposed to be running over, and those mowers are very particular type, they're the reel type mowers, so used for golf courses and whatnot, and they just, they're kind of a maintenance nightmare. And so it wasn't a very fruitful endeavor, and it was decided at that time that we were spending more money repairing our equipment than it would be to just simply have someone else do it. Now, obviously, it's a lot higher budget, so we don't know if that's necessarily still the case, but it definitely was at the old price, I would assume it probably still is. So.
Is anybody here from River Greens?
Hmm, no.
I mean, that's, you know, that's a large increase, I was just wondering if there's any way we could, you know, put, increase so much per year for five years to get to that point? I mean, if part of the reason is that prices went up, if they had been doing a hundred percent of the job, are we now paying for them also to catch up? Because there's a lot of things on this list that they want to do. I was just wondering if, if that was, the RFP went out twice, I believe, it says here, and I guess that's everybody in the county or wherever, we put them to. Still, did we ever try to negotiate that at all, or we just like say, this is their proposal, and this is what we take?
They were the only respondent to the RFP, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so part of the issue is that, as Mark said, we didn't have a active agreement with them. And so, how do you hold someone's feet to the fire when you have no agreement, right?
It's kinda like the other way around, right?
Sure, and so now we're asking them to, again, put it on paper of exactly what they're going to do, and of course, we will expect them to do exactly what is on that list. So, I mean, if you want to invite them here to talk to us, I mean, yeah, that's certainly something we can do.
The proposal that they brought and showed you, was it itemized like this, where you could see the biggest increase on which line item?
Compared with what they had, no, because it really wasn't a proposal, it was call somebody up, say, you know, give me a quote, that's all we had, it's a one-piece paper quote.
Yeah.
Saying, you know, I'll take care of the irrigation, and I'll mow the fields when they're needed, basically, I mean, that's paraphrasing, but it was just a quote. And the, and when we put the first one out, like I said, nobody, somebody here locally that could do it, and we sent to somebody, and I think it's Okeechobee, whoever takes care of the, the ball field that the, the high school uses, nobody wanted to put in for it because of this irrigation. Now, that's, and they said, you know, they need people that are highly trained in in this, because that grass goes dead, that's on them to put the new grass in, it's expensive. So as far as negotiating with them to get it down, I don't think that's gonna happen, I mean, it's, the other ones didn't even put in, and.
So do we have an irrigation problem, or specialized irrigation, and only certain hook?
Well, the irrigation is outdated that's out there, and actually, we had, that was in the scope of the work to be done with the Firdap, which we're not getting for out there. So right now, it's the old one, and they're about the only ones that, according to David Roberts, that can take care of it. But it's a lot of work, I mean, it's, if we don't do this, the ball fields are gonna go back to being very poor. Things cost money to take care of, prices go up, and I, it's hard to believe they were even doing it for the, since twenty fifteen for forty-two thousand dollars, so.
Do you think we could go to RPAK for some type of an update? Irrigation update, or possibly even a synthetic field or something?
Sure, we could, we could put in and ask for it.
All I can say is no, right?
Right, but you know, in the, but the RPAK, we're, because we were looking to put in for the half of the a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, and which we won't be getting the one out, the Firdap out there, but we still have the Martin Luther King that we still haven't heard if we're getting that or not.
And what was the scope of that project?
Fencing and
Oh, that's right.
Lighting, yeah, the visitors bleacher, no, the the home bleachers, which are in bad shape.
Yeah.
And then we have in the, our CIP, is it next year or the year after, for our park across the street for Firdap?
Okay.
I have a question, Mark, so I don't get a chance to get around to all the parks, so how well have they been maintaining them? That's the question.
I think, I think they were doing a decent job, but when they asking me for more money and that, and they know that it's probably costing them money to work, some of them went down, some of it was our fault. We had one person assigned to parks, now we got two, we're fixing to hire a third guy probably within the next couple days. So some of us on the city for failing to have staff over all these years to take care of stuff. But the ball fields out there are looking good, in fact, the the league out there called me last week, they're trying to get a tournament here that usually goes on the Orlando area, is gonna bring in possibly twelve, fifteen, eighteen teams, gonna buy a bunch of people in here to spend some money, but in the ball fields gotta, you know, they gotta be in good shape if we want to get that, or ones in the future.
Sure.
And as you know, well, I know, the mayor knows, because he gets calls too, and one, it looks bad out there. And we've got it, thanks to, River Greens went out there and probably did a lot of work, well, I know they did a lot of work before this is even being approved for them to work, they probably spent some good money out there getting the, the turf back in out there that was, that was in bad shape.
Yep.
Do we require any kind of compensation from the leagues that use the fields, or is it just?
Actually, that's, you know, I don't mean to sound this way sometimes, but that's a lot of catch-up to do in this city, and that's one thing I've got, or two things I need to get to Jerry, because they need, we need new agreements out there, these agreements are so old. And then when the new people took over running the league, they didn't even know that there was one. They're supposed to be giving us a donation of two thousand dollars a year for the lights out there, which hasn't been going on. But on the other side of it, the city hasn't been living up to what they're supposed to be doing out there, so. That's a good question, and like I said, it's, there's a lot of things that, agreement-wise, kind of like this, there was never an RFP that went out. There's agreements that need to be worked in, that the three or four I can think off the top of my head that need to get done, so.
Yeah. Which, I mean, Brittany, you'll probably remember, whenever you was a kid too, but, you know, most kids that that did youth ball played out there, they used to look really good. Remember, they had the concession stands and all that, and everything was in really good shape. And then whenever the city, you know, had some financial issues, starting back to, you know, twenty years ago or so, this stuff kind of just shied away, and then it sort of slipped away, and then it got subbed out, and then it was kind of a, you know, this is almost like a business, you know, you have to, you have to run it effectively, or you have to get rid of it. You can't really just leave it alone, they can't be a zombie company, you know? So I think we kind of have to make a choice of, do we want to cut some of our parks, or do we want to run them effectively? Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of pushback to people getting their parks cut. So running them effectively is definitely the, probably the better way to go. But it does cost money, and it does take a lot of effort, so I think that's the way that we should definitely go, it's just a matter of being able to pay for it. I would say that we agreed to the agreement for the rest of the year, and then it has to be, you know, it can't be forgotten, it has to be an effort to either keep looking for RFPs, see if we can find somebody that's cheaper, look for grant money to update our system, that maybe we can get more offers. You know, you can go synthetic, there's lots of things you can do, but it's definitely gonna be a hard road forward.
So so this new agreement, they are not going to upgrade any of the irrigation or fix any of those issues? That would be something we would have to do later?
Yes.
Yeah, it it's strictly around mowing, fertilizing, and pest control.
When are they wanting this to go into effect? The price?
Well, as soon as Jerry, I asked Andy Mogul, our purchasing agent, to get, or Jerry on an agreement with them, because the one that was in there doesn't fit this, the one in there is kind of like a one-time thing, construction project and done, so. I've asked, I don't know if he's reached out to you yet, but he's supposed to reach out and.
I I looked at an agreement for him a week and a half ago.
Yeah, he's, he showed me that one.
Okay, that's not the one you're, you want, you want to end up with?
Yeah, I think if, I know he looked at you, because I told him there's things that need to be in there, like the public records and that, but I think there's more in there. This, that's more like a one-time project, putting windows in the city hall where this, you know, how long do they want a contract? They may not take a contract for one year, I don't know.
Right.
But it needs to be more of a contract, we can hold their feet, and they can hold us to do our part, but.
You do that?
So as soon as Jerry.
Before we make a decision?
I mean, a decision can be made based on them accepting the contract, right?
Yeah.
So Mayor, let me make sure I'm understanding you right, you're saying, let's go with the deal for one year, and before the year is up, we find someone else, is that what you're saying?
Well, we need to find out, is, is this a good price? They were, they were the only respondent, and part of the reason why they were the only respondent is because of the irrigation, the irrigation system that we have out there. So we need to, as a, do we need to upgrade our irrigation system? Is it gonna be an effective cost that we can then get more applicants? Is this our only applicant we're ever going to have? Do we want to do it ourselves, or do we want to make it a synthetic field? Or do we want to get rid of the field? That's kind of your only five options.
And have we looked at what would it cost if we do it ourselves?
Um, we did years ago, we haven't in recent, you know, the last three or four years. We do know that the equipment is several hundred thousand dollars, so you have that. Um, but we don't know what the ongoing cost would be. Correct.
I don't know, it just, it just seems like, it's, they're almost doubling what they're asking for, that's, that's the problem. I get it, I I get things go up, but.
Sure.
I asked Mark.
Significant amount.
What, what? How was the upkeep? You know, you asking for all this money, and I heard Mark say it wasn't all, it wasn't necessarily all their fault either. I I was expecting, you know, they did a great job with our fields, you know, we don't have no complaints about our field. I didn't hear all that, but yet still, you asking for all this money, and you didn't do all that great of a job.
Then we just authorize the other thirty-four thousand five hundred to cover the rest of this year, and then look into a, a new contract to see everything changes between now and then? Because if we, if we don't increase the budget something, then the fields are gonna be used another month or two quite heavily, and, you know, we ought to be able at least between now to the end of summer, and the next budget pay them without having a yearly contract and wait till the next year and sign a contract, and hope we have other proposals or other items.
That's precisely what I was proposing.
Okay.
Yeah, so what the same Andrew was proposing, I see any reason why you couldn't do that?
All right, so move? Just approve the thirty-four thousand five hundred to cover additional costs through the end of this budget.
That's your motion?
Yeah, and approve the proposal.
Well, we don't want to approve.
It's not an ongoing proposal.
No.
This strictly takes us to the end of the year, right?
If that's what you want, your contract, right, but it's still gotta be approved, because they're the ones that put the proposal on, so.
Right.
Proposal subject to a contract, so that way, we can just go ahead and move on the contract and get everything going.
Okay.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes, my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions, clarifications? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number ten, we have the budget increase for tending of the community center termites. Ms. Schaper?
Um, so we, again, we're gonna ask for some more money. Um, the termites have infested the community center, and we went out and got four different quotes. The least expensive was Cox Pest Control, in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this again will be a increase to the budget.
Okay, do we know when that was last tended?
I have no idea.
No.
I'm assuming that we're not under a tending agreement? Typically, after you get something tended, you're able to enter into an agreement, is that part of this proposal?
Right, we, I have not seen one, and Robert didn't know one, because when Robert's here, we saw some activity in there, but with it being closed, and some of the seal tiles down, that's, it's really noticeable.
I see.
So.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, so Mark, he asked, do you know when was the last tended? My question is, have it ever been tended?
It hasn't in the three years I've been here, other than that, I don't know.
Right, yeah, unless, unless one of us actually physically remembers it, it's.
I don't remember it.
I don't either. I'm sure at some point in its lifetime, it has been tended.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a pretty old building.
I, I have used Cox Pest Control unfortunately twice in the last fifteen years from my house. And they do an excellent job. And they also then offer you a uh, like a warranty or guarantee program where you pay so much per year to uh, to cover the costs in case they come back again and you're basically like buying insurance.
Right.
I will say one thing, the uh, the person who worked for Cox who did my home, he, his opinion was that more times than not, that by the time the pests come back, you've already paid as much, if not more than what it cost to tenant another time. So it's kinda like a little insurance gamble, you know, it's like, do you pay the insurance so that in eight years, you would have paid enough to tenant again? Is it worth taking that risk or, or not? And his opinion was, and he was right, it was like nine years and it hadn't, hadn't come back. But I, I would have paid him more money if I would have been paying a monthly guarantee after that. But that's just what personal thing happened to me. But I, I will say they're a good company. They got the lowest price. You gotta have it done. Self aboard people won't be happy if we don't get it done.
So they, they came out and actually did an inspection and they saw actual activity going on? Or is it just from them banging on the roof and everything kinda falling down?
No activity, actually, we could see activity before they were banging on the roof. It's all over on the floor in there.
Yeah, like little tiny pieces of pepper or something.
But all these contractors, do they actually physically come out and give quotes or do they just do it over the phone?
Um, I know the first three and I asked them to do it with Clark because I use them too and I know they're really good. But I'm pretty sure Andy said they also came out.
Yeah, they did.
Okay, yeah, I mean, really, the only question I have is what uh they would be willing to offer as far as an ongoing renewal fee or insurance policy or whatever they call that? Is this something you're wanting to do right this very second or can it wait uh till our next meeting? Do we get that answered?
They've been working on it for years, probably another two weeks isn't gonna matter.
Okay. That would be my suggestion is ask that question um to see what it would be. Any other questions we want to ask them?
Just the, the art museum upstairs been, has been notified about the issue, right?
Yeah, I can only say as far as I know, they pretty much know everything's been going on over there because they're the only ones in there now with the, the roof going on, so.
Okay. Anything else?
So the commi- sorry, the community center is closed right now, right?
Yes.
The first floor.
Uh, yeah, I think that's a good idea to come, give them all the option to come back and ask us what the continual yearly warranty price would be. Because one thing I noticed here with Cox is they said that they will meet or bid, or beat all bids.
They've already done that.
They've already done that, but I'm saying, well, they also beat all bids when it comes down to the annual renewal warranty program.
Probably not once they see these other bids, so, if they're smart.
I don't know.
We'll see. Anyway, that doesn't require a motion, so. So long as no one objects, we will move on. Item number eleven, we have the approval of postage machine lease. Melody, that's you, your popular lady tonight.
I see that. Yeah, um, so this is just a standard lease. We have a postage machine already um in uh utility billing and the lease is up in um March. So it is going to be an additional uh four hundred and thirty-four dollars a year. Um, Jerry's already reviewed the lease and is good with it and we can get the money from another line item.
Okay. Set of curiosity, do we pay um, obviously, we send a lot of letters. So do we, do we pay a standard stamp fee or how does that work?
So it's a basic fee. We don't have a um permit to get a reduced um postage fee, so we pay quite a bit in postage.
Okay. Is that anything that we can do or is that pretty much?
It might be. I will, um, I know in Frostproof, we had a, a um permit and we got a few cents off per, per letter, so. And, but we also mailed our own up there. Here, we contract with a company that mails them out.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah.
Okay.
But I can check.
All right. So we'll need a motion for that? Anyone?
I'll make a motion. We approve item eleven, approve postage machine lease.
Do we have a second?
I second it, so.
We have a motion and a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just real quick before we go on, is that with Pitney Bowes that you are dealing with?
I believe so, let me see. It's the state of Florida, so it's quadient leasing.
Okay.
Item number twelve is ready to go, is that right? You have the agreement in place?
Yes, yep.
All right, item number twelve, we have the approval of the utility loan agreement for two four five five West Green Lawn Road. This would be Carlos Bentecourt. Melody?
Yes, so um we have, it's, this is again standard. So we have the application for new service, the deferred payment plan calculation and the deferred um plan uh lien agreement. Um, and it just needs your approval.
Okay. Do we have any questions about this? Seeing none?
Uh, Mayor, I have some questions. Mark, I was under the impression we wasn't doing this individual stuff anymore.
Uh, I don't know what you mean, individual stuff?
Like um, this is a water hookup, right?
Correct, capacity fees, which are high and people can't afford upfront, right?
We're financing it for them.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D twelve for the utility loan agreement.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Last questions? Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number thirteen is removed until we can get the agreement in place.
We have somebody here from our number five that want to bring that back up.
Okay. All right, we'll go back to item number five. This is a request to city fund scholarship for Miss Avon Park Pageant. It's Carrie Bryant.
I think she has a representative here.
Please give your name and address for the record, please.
My home address?
Or your organization, whatever you want to do.
Okay, my name is Lacey Deloach. I'm the Assistant Director for the Miss Avon Park City of Charm Pageant. Um, I do not have the business address, so my home address is forty-one hundred Avon, or East Bowls Lane in Avon Park.
Okay.
Um, as you guys know, the Miss Avon Park City of Charm Pageant has not been a thing for a few years. It was closed down due to COVID, um, and unfortunately, we just haven't had it. Uh, Ms. Carrie Bryant, she is the director. She's actually stuck in I four, so I came to speak for her um as the Assistant Director. Um, we have an organization, Heartland Helping Hands, that has agreed to help back us. And with it being the Miss Avon Park City of Charm Pageant, um, we are requesting a scholarship for the winner to further her education, anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars.
Okay. How much do you normally raise in total?
Um, this is, this is the first year that we're getting it back off the ground. And this is my first year being involved, so I can't speak for previous years.
Okay.
Um, it was previously the Miss Avon Park Chamber of Commerce. And again, that was gone away a few years ago. Um, we have been fundraising already. There's been multiple businesses around Avon Park that have genuine generously donated. Um, I do not have an exact total for what has been donated as of yet. Um.
Okay. It's just not something that normally comes before the council, so that's why I'm asking of, you know, what, what change? Is this, are you just reaching out because there's new management or, you know, what?
Um, and ideally, the chamber used to provide the scholarship. However, now that we are a different name, we are a different, we're now Miss Avon Park City of Charm. We were wondering if this city would.
So it was previously a chamber event?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, it was, it was stopped uh several years ago whenever they uh, an issue, something happened. And so the, the board for the chamber decided to stop doing the Miss Avon Park.
Mm-hmm.
And then, like you said, it has gone on for quite a few years. And uh, one of the persons who participated in the last Miss Avon Park approached me uh at the very beginning of the year and wanted to know if there's something we could do to bring it back. Because the fact that uh, this brings a lot of pride, it gives somebody a chance to, teaches them teaching skills, how to talk and communicate and maybe even dance or sing in public. So it gives them a lot of confidence. It's something that we really need to move forward to help our, our ladies in high school to bring something like this back. And that the, at the time, that person and then I believe that also uh people here now ask Chamber of Commerce if they're interested in going back and doing it again. And they said, no, they didn't want to be involved with it. So Carrie went ahead and took on her self to develop this. And you can see all the homework that she's done, done everything. She's filled every basis, every space that she could. And I just think that, you know, we should go ahead and uh, you know, donate some money to the scholarship to give people that are young women and, and high school and incentive to promote their confidence in the future and, and as well as their education. And so I think that the, the city definitely should turn, in my opinion, should donate a, a minimum of a thousand dollars toward a scholarship. But I wouldn't mind if we went, gave more for a first and second. But uh, I think eventually they're gonna have, if I read it correctly, they're gonna have like a, a queen's court of, which is the queen and probably three, the second and three, the third, fourth. But uh, at least maybe the first year, I think that the city could definitely donate a minimum of a thousand dollars. And if I needed to make a motion, I will unless you want to discuss it first.
I've got some questions.
Sure.
Um, I heard you say the chambers of commerce didn't want to do it anymore. What was the reason? Personally, I think this is something that maybe the chambers of commerce should be dealing with and not this city itself.
Well, first of all, the most recent uh director of the chamber just left a few weeks ago. And so he's no longer there and he was the one that decided not to go forward with it in the last couple of years. They just appointed a brand new person to take the, take over the chamber, Ms. Kamala Long. Unfortunately, her mother, she just got appointed a little week ago, her mother uh, out of the country, had to have surgery the past week, so she's not here. But I know that I talked to her before she left and she said that she would be least willing to help it get off the ground after the first year and then we could see what happens after that. But uh, it's, it's kinda hard for her to speak for herself when she's not here. And she really hasn't spent more than a, a, a day as being the director of the chamber yet. But uh.
Yep.
Uh, if you just want to make it a one time deal for doing it now to get started, give a scholarship, it encourages uh the young ladies to participate and I, I think it's something we can afford to do and be proud to do it.
Um, if I may for a second, I'm sorry. Um, Carrie Bryant, the director, she directed the pageant when it was under Miss Avon Park Chamber of Commerce for eight years. She was actually director when I did, participated in it in two thousand and seven. Um, she has three teenage, now teenage boys who keep her all over the place. Um, and the year she stepped down, she passed it on. And then they had the chamber, the pageant for a few years and then it stopped. Um, so she, she, she directed it for eight years, so she definitely, she, she knows what she's doing. She's got everything done. We have seven girls enrolled in the pageant now. They are so excited. And Carrie really wanted to personally just bring this back because it brings so much back to Avon Park. It gives the girls something to look forward to. Um, and this year, getting off the ground, we are only doing a Miss Avon Park um City of Charm Pageant. That is high school age girls. Next year, we plan to do a junior miss, which would be middle school age girls, a little miss, um, which would be fifth grade girls, and then a tiny miss, which would be kindergarten. Um, so we definitely have plans to take this a lot further and to bring the excitement and the charm and the um, you know, the opportunity for these girls to represent Avon Park the way it, it has always been.
Where will the event be held?
Um, the event, the pageant itself is April first at South Florida State College in the auditorium.
And right now, you just have seven participants?
Yes, ma'am.
Has the deadline passed for?
For entering, yes, ma'am. Um, we had packets at all of the schools, um, and Carrie dropped all of those off. And we had seven girls come out. We also just attended the Miss Highlands County Pageant um this past, the weekend before last. And the Miss Highlands County Pageant had seven contestants as well. So we're very excited for this being the first year, just getting it back off the ground after not having it for three years, that we had the seven come out.
So in the past, when, when you, before the COVID, what, what was the count for the participant then? Because that seems to me to be a very low count. Make me think girls are not interested. So what was the count before the COVID?
I can't speak for that because I was not a part of it then. I did participate in the pageant myself in two thousand and seven and I believe we had ten or eleven girls that year.
My, my daughter's participated in it in um, it was twenty-eleven and there was over twenty.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, there was over twenty. I, I think it's just getting it back out to the community that's happening.
Yes, ma'am. Most definitely.
Private people typically donate to that or businesses or?
Well, we did when it was in twenty-eleven. They would take, yeah, private, private people.
Each contestant goes and gets sponsors or something?
But if they didn't, it was no big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've noticed that they actually have been advertising on Facebook and what they've been doing is putting the, the bit, businesses and showing that they had it donated to them. And they're basically, they've been on Facebook like almost every day for the last three weeks. So there's dozens of businesses that have already helped try to support, get this pageant off the ground. And uh, so I, I just think that if we're gonna have a, a Miss Highlands County, why not have Miss Avon Park? I mean, that's, we should have somebody for the proud of our city, you know?
Will there be guidelines on how they can use the scholarship?
It has to be to further their education. Um, what do you mean?
Um, well, when you say further their education, I mean, that's a wide range. It can be college, it can be a technical institute, um, it can just be job training. So I'm just kinda interested to see, or if we were willing to donate, if we could set some parameters as far as how that, how that scholarship's gonna be used.
She, she makes a good point because um, as I've seen before, we're furthering education include buying a car because they needed to get back and forth to the school. So I mean, there's all kinds of things that, that can go towards. It's pretty broad.
Most definitely. Um, I, Carrie would be the one. Um, I know that she does have a very strict guideline for the winner and the fact that it's been stressed that you are representing the city and the community and um.
So that was kinda my second question. Do you know, um, because I know it mentioned in there several opportunities to represent the city. So what would some of those opportunities look like?
Um, she would be, Carrie has, excuse me, Carrie has been in contact with um the chamber and is getting events lined up in the city and what have you for festivals and guest appearances, sister appearances at other pageants. Um, we do have a, a rule, guidelines. Um, for example, can't be married, can't have children. Um, you have to, we've, we've stressed immensely to these girls, you know, the internet, the social media. All of that is seen. You are not only representing yourself and your family, but you're representing Avon Park as a whole. Um, so there are, there are guidelines in place as to how they need to conduct themselves, most definitely.
I believe they do chamber mixers also.
They do.
Yeah.
Well, my uh first reaction would be, hey, let's uh wait till Carrie can be here and ask her some more questions. But looking at your schedule here, that's probably not gonna work for you guys. Uh, your first event is February the twenty-sixth, looks like?
Yeah, some of the things have already gone past their original.
Yeah, so our next meeting wouldn't be until I believe the twenty-seventh, right?
Twenty, well, yeah, the twenty-seventh.
Well, the scholarship wouldn't be awarded until the actual.
That's true.
Right, until April first.
That's true.
I would just like some specific guidelines. If we're gonna donate the money, how, how they can use it.
So I'm not super excited about uh, you know, the seven participants because it seems like, you know, we're giving away tax dollars. It's gonna go to one person. Doesn't really kinda fulfill the mission of what I think tax dollars should do. It should be for the, you know, the benefit of, of the whole. Granted, it is an event that's gonna attract other people, it's sense of pride for the community, all that, so I understand. However, um, I would much rather see it in private hands than, than in public hands, for sure. Um, I think it's a good thing. It just definitely doesn't seem like something that uh.
So those, those generous donors that you mentioned before, is there enough already in the pageant where you could offer a scholarship without the city?
We are starting from the, like I said, from the ground up. So everything from rental of the um auditorium at the college to um costumes, to props, to crowns and sashes and tiaras, uh, we are literally starting from the ground up. So at this point, we are, we're trying to cover everything with the money we've been.
Sure.
We've raised so far.
Well, Mayor, perhaps we can give something just to get them off the ground and then tell them, next year, you probably need to look elsewhere, but we can help you get, get you off the ground this year.
She only asked for five hundred dollars minimum. I mean, I think we could.
Do, do you think Carrie can be at our next meeting?
Sure.
Okay, is, is she local, I'm assuming?
Uh, she is, she is. She lives in Avon Park.
Okay. Um, I, I'd like to ask her some more questions and think about it a little bit more. It just, if, if we're gonna do it, I think uh, sure. it just, if, if we're gonna do it, I think, uh, sure, you know, anybody can write a check for five hundred bucks, but I'd rather see it more making a bigger effort into it and actually understanding what's behind it, and if this is gonna be a rep, you know, we're spending city dollars on it, not chamber dollars. So if we're gonna spend city money on it, we'd like to see what, what is the city actually getting from, for that? And, um, you know, is this person actually gonna represent the city, you know, or is it just simply giving money to various organizations? So, just be interested in talking to her.
Okay.
So, if you can invite her to our next meeting.
Okay, what date is the next meeting?
Is it twenty-seventh?
Uh, yes, February twenty-seventh at six P M.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Item number fourteen, we have a discussion with possible decision of the Historical Society of Avon Park request for the new lease. Jerry?
Yeah, in your package, you'll see a memo that I wrote about, um, this, um, particular item. Um, just, there's, I just put together a, a basic lease, didn't go with the, um, their fifty years that they wanted, or their, um, covenant running with the land, saying it'll never be used for anything other than that. I, I, um, I think that's the decision you all need to make, and, and, uh, I gave you some reasons why I thought that there might be some consideration for that, although I might be stepping a little bit out of my lane on that. Um, I, I have seen the past circumstances where, you know, long-term leases like that become almost meaningless at some point because technology changes and things like that. So that's really the gravamen of what I, of my memo talks about.
Okay. Uh, anyone have any questions for Jerry out of the gate here?
Well, I, I just wanted him to make sure that he's aware of the fact that they're in the process of adding a baseball museum on the property too, and to additional to the museum, and, uh, that's gonna probably, they, they need to raise a couple hundred thousand, then it's gonna cost at least four hundred thousand dollars. So I think that that baseball museum, once it gets built in, in place, it's gonna bring a lot of foot traffic here from not only the area, but from out of the state. So I understand your concern over thirty, forty, or fifty, but I think we could at least give them a, a ten-year lease. They've been there ever since I've been here, and I think that they'll be here at least ten more years.
No objection whatsoever to a ten-year lease. I mean, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Um, I talked to Mr. Seventy at the signing, and I, I, I believe a proponent of getting that grant was they wanted an extended lease.
Well, that's right, that, that's true, he did make that comment.
They said, they mentioned particularly the fifty years, the actual grant.
I don't think they need fifty years, I've never heard of a grant that requires fifty years.
That's just what he said at the groundbreaking.
I think, I thought he said, the minimum was twenty years.
Can, can I add?
Yes, please.
It, it's my fault Nancy's not here, I forgot to call her.
Okay.
But Nancy told me, once she came to meet with me, that they wanted a fifty-year lease, and I said, I don't think you're probably gonna get that one, but that'd be up to council. She said if they can't get that, they at least wanted a thirty-year lease, and Jerry and I talked, and he has very good, um, thoughts on it, so, but I just wanna say, but yes, they did, they wanted a fifty, she would say they would take a thirty, and that's led us up to this, so just everybody knows what's going on. Like I say, my fault Nancy's not here tonight.
But, but Mark, what's the purpose of the fifty year lease? What is, why, what did she say?
Well, one, they have to have at least ten years remaining on a lease in order to put in for this grant, because they're not gonna get this done without the grant.
Right.
They're trying to raise half, they can get the other half in a grant, which our people excited in Avon Park, this is coming in here. Um, but they want it longer so that they know it's gonna remain a museum, and Jerry, they also wanted it so the covenant in there that they, nothing else could, could take place there, that was the other thing to ask. But they, their thought is it needs to be as long as possible because they always want that to remain a museum.
Sure.
Well, that's the example that I gave you in there regarding long-term leases and what happens in long-term contracts in general, is they become just meaningless or even silly at some point because of the way things change. Like I used the, the fact that you had horse and buggy, and then all of a sudden, a car came around and, and people had all these contracts for horse and buggy production and providing wheels for the horses and the bu, for the, for the buggies and things like that, and, and, uh, I was like, how do I get out of this contract now, you know?
Right.
So, um, this is, it's a long time. I, I, I certainly agree with whatever the, the grant requires, which is usually twenty to twenty-five years, I don't know that...
Yeah, I thought it was twenty.
But, but, uh, I've, I've never, I'm certainly, I think the, the fifty is, you know, uh, it's not really reasonable.
But what is the harm in fifty years? I mean, really, what is, what's the harm of it?
The harm is you, you have no way of getting out of it, your building will be there for fifty years, there's people, if this, and it may not even exist at that point, and you can say they have to give it up if that, if it's not used for this, but there's all kinds of ways people can get around that. Um, I, it's, it's just, um, it's a long time to give somebody a building, um, for, you say you're, you don't, you, they're not even a city court, uh, organization, they're, they're a nonprofit organization. Yeah.
Does it just apply to the train and the building right beside it? Or is it the whole strip of land?
I think it's the whole strip of land that...
All the way down?
That would, that's why, that's why they'd be able to build the baseball museum, because they have the property all the way to, to, uh, Main Street.
She's talking about the property that goes all the way to?
All the way to the other side.
Old police station.
Oh.
So I, I did a little...
No, I don't, I don't need to have that.
I did a little looking at it, you know, and I, I gave you a couple of URLs there, you can pop on and see that some people are predicting that libraries are gonna basically go away the, in the structure that you have now because there're gonna be three D images available. A lot of people prefer to do that as opposed to go walking through a building, and, uh, so.
Sure.
But, but I leave it to you, it's your decision. It, it's just that you'll be binding a lot of commissions to this particular, um, decision for fifty years.
Right. Well, I've heard a couple different numbers as to what the minimum for the grant is. Um, the consensus seems to be ten years, but we've also heard a couple times of twenty years. Realistically, is this gonna be used for anything else other than a museum? Probably not as we stand here today, but as Jerry says, we don't know the future. Um, so my suggestion would be to go for twenty-one years, and the reason why twenty-one years is because you have to have ten years remaining, and the off chance that you have to have twenty years remaining, um, this still gives them a year to get all their ducks in a row. Um, you also have a lot of things that can get delayed, um, so we don't wanna really cut it close if, for some reason, it takes four years to get their funding and, you know, all that, so. Twenty-one years would be my number, just because it's safe, that's, that's about as low as we can go to safely guarantee that they're, this lease will not stand in their way of getting any grant funds.
And what is the, when does the lease expires, the one we have now?
Uh, this would be a new one entirely, right? Cause it would...
Yeah, I think it's next year, I don't have it in front of me, but it's coming up soon.
And, and how long was it for?
Ten years, I believe, what, I think I did it when I first got here.
I think it was ten, but they're gonna ask for another five, and I'm not positive, I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's what it was, they could ask for another five.
The idea is after everything gets built, then you would return back to a, you know, five or a ten or whatever the council at that time deems necessary.
Uh, if you all are happy with the, the museum and you get to tw, into twenty years, you could always renew it or whoever's, you know, here at the time.
Sure, yeah.
Can say, wow, that's great, let's go ahead and give them another twenty years.
Yep.
Just...
We, we won't be here in twenty-one years, so it's not a big...
I won't.
I don't plan on it.
City clerk said she will be, so she'll remember it.
I will be right here.
Hopefully I physically exist, I promise you.
Yeah, but she's gonna be here.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I, can I add something else in this that Nancy brought up? Under, um, page four of twelve, you see under utilities, they're supposed to pay, um, fully and promptly pay for water, gas, heat, light, power, et cetera. She told me that they don't wanna pay, they want the city to pay the water and the light because the city is paying that now, and I'm like, well, that's not what's in your current agreement, so I got looking into it, and supposedly in twenty nineteen, somebody said that the city can start paying that, not them. I said, so I looked for an amended agreement or something, or where council approved it, but I haven't seen that yet unless you remember it coming, but someone, the city hall approved it, and the city's been paying it since twenty nineteen.
I don't remember it being a council action.
I don't either.
I, I asked for it for the person who told me, and they couldn't find it either, so I don't think it came in front of you, so obviously it shouldn't have been done, but I told her, my opinion was, you're getting this and you probably should pay it, but I don't, that'd be up to council, but it's currently in it, they haven't been paying it, but in this one, it is in there that they pay it.
Any questions on that part of it?
The only, the second part is the, um, the, the covenant. I mean, I, I don't see any purpose to the covenant at all, if they have a contract, a lease, then they can use it as baseball, and that's what it says in there, is a baseball museum and some historical museum.
Historical museum, then they're gonna build a baseball museum extension, yeah.
Uh, and so, I, I, when they have that, that's what locks you in. So, you know, they don't need a covenant for that unless she thinks that something will happen with the organizations she's with where they may wanna change it at some point, and, uh, in which case, you know, they're gonna have a hard time getting around the lease, which says that's what they have to use it for.
So it's your suggestion to take the covenant out, you're saying?
Well, there is no covenant, but they asked for one, and I don't understand, I can't understand why the covenant was necessary at all.
Their thought, her thought was so that the city can never use it for anything else. Well, my thought when I was talking to Jerry should be if it's in there that they can't use it for anything else too, but Jerry's the legal expert here and says, really, you got the contracts, is what it can be used for, so, but she did ask for it.
Okay, but they, they didn't mention it was part of any grant application or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Mark, I'm a little confused, the city can't use it for anything else while they're there or ever?
Well, just be under the contract, if the contract runs out, go back to the city anyway, so.
Okay, so they're saying the city can't use it for anything else while they're there?
And we don't want it, we got too much to take care of. Yeah, that's why they're there.
Sounds like neither one of us wanna use it for anything but a museum.
No.
Exactly.
So I was just looking for some direction so I can make the modifications to the, um, the, uh, lease and then, um, um, provide a copy for them to review and for you guys to review.
Okay. Uh, my suggestion, uh, we take out the covenant as Jerry suggested, uh, make the term for twenty-one years, and, uh, keep it as is with them paying the utilities.
So moved, or second, whichever.
You can make the motion, that's fine.
You say keep it as is, they're paying the utility?
Correct.
I thought we were paying the utility.
The agreement says they pay it, however, they're saying we were actually paying it, even though the agreement says that they pay.
Okay.
We're, we're actively paying it.
And whether or not we want to yield that in the future, that's fine, but at this point, we're making the rules because we're given the lease, so.
It's a very favorable lease for them.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion. Um, somebody wanna second that motion? Jim did a so moved, to what I had suggested, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second, do we have any further questions? Jerry, is there anything else that we're missing here?
Not that I can see right now, but, you know, I'll bring you back to contract, and you guys can comment on it then.
And if, if they come forward with something from the grant that requires so many years, we can change it at that time?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. I mean, even if they signed it and then later on, they were, that was imposed on them, you know, it's true, it's something we can obviously amend, because you want to keep them as a historical museum.
Yeah, if they need to change it, they'll show up at the next meeting for sure.
Sure.
So I'll make sure she's here anyways, and talk about the contract.
Either her or Dr. Ryan.
All right, we have a motion and a second, if you please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
If, if you don't mind, I just have an update on two other items, if you, just quick, um, you asked me to work with the people regarding wrestling, I, I did send them a draft agreement, and I haven't heard anything back. Uh, when I, I did call them on the phone, and he said that he really didn't like to deal with the contract, he wanted to have a permit, and he said that's what they're doing for him in Arcadia, and they just, all I do is get, apply for the permit, and away you go. And so what you're, what you're talking about there is, rather than having a contract, you build all that stuff into your code, and, and, um, then you issue a permit if they comply with the code and provide you the insurance and all, it's not a huge difference, but do you wanna go to the trouble of, of having a, basically park usage, um, um, permit?
Only, only if it would apply to other things and be useful for other venues, you know? If it strictly is one case, then absolutely not.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, and I, you know, wonder out loud, I haven't looked at it yet, whether it would be a problem with regard to the fact you already have a lease on that, that property for, uh, the girls' and boys' club, so, um, I haven't heard anything from them in at least a month, so.
Sure.
Uh, same thing goes with the lawnmower people, you know, lawnmower racing. I went out and told them, I said, please call me, and gave them my number and everything, I haven't heard anything from them.
Didn't get anything back from them?
Who?
Really?
Haven't heard one thing from them. I went out there the other day, I'm passing back, actually, from lunch, drove in there, and there was no activity, so. Haven't heard anything.
When was there, when was the race?
It was supposed to be Saturday, I thought, last night, February eleventh.
And they haven't cut the grass or anything?
They what?
They haven't done anything out there?
I mean, the grass mowed, and I don't know how recently, but I thought maybe they'd be up, I haven't heard, uh, Jerry asked me if I'd heard from them, I said no, and he gave them the number, he was, they were supposed to call them, and I just drove, went in there the other day looking around and...
They were so adamant, I just assumed that they would have been knocking on the door.
Um, is there a way we can get a, maybe they're waiting on us to call? I mean, I don't want somebody to assume either side's gonna be there and their, other side's assuming they're gonna be there.
Well, they're supposed to get their insurance and, and call Jerry, so they didn't call.
And I, I told them, you know, and I, I went out and sat with them for a few moments and talked to them, and gave them my phone number and said, you know, here, please give me a call, let's talk about this thing and see if we can figure it out. I don't know what else to do.
Okay.
I think they changed their mind.
Okay.
That's all I had, thank you.
Let's Barry know something. Maybe he doesn't wanna say.
I can't speak under my hat.
Okay.
We, we allow hearsay in here in this room.
Barry Foster, twenty-eight eighty-five West County Line Road, Avon Park. If you look at their social media, I think you'll find they've been sufficiently discouraged that they're probably, would be my assertion from looking at their social media, they've been sufficiently discouraged, so I don't think they will, I can't speak for Wes or Christie, but...
Okay.
They think they're, they feel like they pretty much have been booted out. And about the fifty-year lease, I would encourage you to look at newspaper accounts And about the fifty-year lease, I would encourage you to look at newspaper accounts from a place that used to be out at the airport. Called Wellcraft and look at their long-term lease, if you wanna know what can go wrong. Anything that can go wrong will go wrong and at the worst possible.
And, and you, you really enjoy the, um, cla- classic palladium lease when you look at that too. That's one.
About, about every week.
They were, at the time, they were more than delighted to have them come in.
Yep.
I, I, I actually sat, well, right about there, the TV screens weren't there. But, that, you can look at that and you can look at, uh, well, there's been several long-term leases that have not served the city well.
Uh, you'd have to work pretty hard to get a more one-sided lease than that one.
Okay, alright, well, that brings us to our regular updates, city manager, what do you got?
Fam. The, uh, the lease was sent to them to end of last week, um, draft lease and the PowerPoint for your twenty-third meeting, um, special meeting. Also, they're still working on their AI, part of their AIPP, but they've got the lease looking at it, looking at the PowerPoint. Um, Lowell's getting with them individually to talk about helping them with the AIPP, so it's moving forward.
Okay.
Um, the property behind the, um, North District, um, Sheriff's Office, the old police department that they wanted to put the monopole in. Uh, I got thinking a couple of weeks ago about, since I've been here, Susie Bishop, every other year or so comes out and looks for these skinks. And that's one of the properties, so I pulled it up and there's a conversa- or conservation easement for that whole property. So I sent it to Jerry, so they can't build under it, over it, side of it or anything on it.
Oh, joy.
Yes, so I met, um, the, the company, City or whatever, huh? City Switch, thank you, they sent down a lady on Friday, I met her, I gave her a copy of this, she called them. Um, I went behind, uh, the Sheriff's Office substation, she was looking. Right behind the substation there, any of you have been out there, there, there's a shed out there, they use it for some evidence bicycles or whatever now. The easement really looks now, I don't have a survey, but it looks like it's where the wooded area, obviously you can't touch it starts. She was taking some, um, GPS locations, flat and long, just to the. It'd be right behind the, the, um, the building and just to the east of the pole barn, see if there'd be enough room for them to put that. They'd have to knock down a few trees, but they're supposed to be getting back me and I said that's something I'd have to bring to council, but other than that, they can. Well, when they first came here, we gave them other ideas on city property and they wanted that one, but we can't do anything on that property.
Okay, well, there's several private property owners along in that same area that, you know, if their price is right, I'm sure they would be amenable to it.
Right. Um, just, um, some new hires, we've got nine, about seven started. We got two more starting in the past month, we've been trying to knock them out. And, um, thanks to Randy taking over doing the, running the oral interviews and, um, Liz helping me out with paperwork and that stuff. But, um, we're gonna be completely full in sanitation and we were gonna be full in streets, but one guy just got another job. But I got two more people put in for today, so, and two in C and D are working up, so we're trying to fill these positions. And that brings me to the last one, I talked to the mayor Thursday.
Okay.
And my three-year contract is up here with the city, I told them it's seventeenth, but that's when I started, actually signed on the twelfth. So Mayor, let me turn it over to you.
Sure, so our city manager's contract is, uh, is ending and we need to, um, obviously. Come up with a new one, um, typically in this case, they would, um, either have it out between all of us for our negotiation. Or they would, um, assign one council person to be a negotiator. It's not too much negotiating going on, but more or less just talk over everything, make sure that the, uh, city attorney and everything has the agreement ready to go. Uh, to present to the council and then we would pass or fail, execute or not. So, um, Jerry, obviously given the timeline of this, um, we need to probably make a decision on what we're going to do tonight, right?
Yep.
Um, and then you don't see any issues with, um, coming to probably our next or the meeting after with the contract?
Uh, not at all.
Okay, alright, uh, so it's up to the council now if they want to, um, appoint someone from the council to, uh, be the negotiator with, um, with Mark or what? I volunteer as tribute.
Who?
Well, it said I volunteer as tribute.
I, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay.
Cause I have a lot of questions.
What were you about to say, Jerry?
Well, you get dangerously close to, um, sunshine issues when you, um, assign somebody.
Oh.
Um, and it, it can be done, but you still have to do it in the public, so you have to notice and have, um, recording and all of that, that stuff.
Well, why don't we start a different way, what, what do you suggest that we do on getting this?
But, the, the, when you get past the, the nuts and bolts of just, you know, the, um, legal aspects and, and, and all that. It really, the negotiating of the price and, and terms and so on should be done in the public.
Okay, so just bringing back to our next.
I, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, so obviously, um, the contract that you currently have, um, there wouldn't be very much changes. Other than pay or anything like, something like that, there was very mi- minimal changes, right?
Yes, I'm looking at, um, increase in pay and also, um, the health benefits, which I can't take. I would like to receive those in, in the money, cause it's in the budget anyways.
Okay, so Jerry, could you have that prepared for our next meeting?
Sure, and I, I'll get with, um, uh, Mark with regard to where the, uh, any of these other terms that might change from legal aspect.
Okay, so as far as, um, doing some type of, uh, an, an assessment or something like that, is that something that you suggest or?
Uh, well, most, most people do, um, a, uh, an assessment, yeah, they do, um, um, evaluation. So to speak, and, um, there's tons of them available out there for city managers, I think, so, for League of Cities has them and so on. In my opinion, he's done a fabulous job and has been very easy to work with and, and, uh, very smart, so.
I would agree, I'm just curious if we should go through with, uh, that sort of, um.
I would just suggest it for the future, you don't have time to do it now.
Right, and, uh, I would strongly encourage all the council members to reach out to Mark, obviously before our next meeting. Everybody's gonna have questions, everybody's gonna have things they wanna know or, or wanna say, so, you know, by all means, the more that you can reach out. And talk about those things before the meeting, the better.
So this is our first, sorry, this is our first time here, y'all, y'all talking over my head, I have no idea what y'all talking about.
That's our city manager right there, he has a contract, we gotta talk about it.
Mm-hmm, we gotta talk about whether we're gonna hire him again.
Correct.
And so you said we need to get with the city manager to get the city, get with the city manager to discuss what, our assessment?
Well, you're gonna, I, I'm sure that, I'm sure that you have questions about something that's happened since you've been here or you.
Air it out.
Things you like, yeah, exactly.
Air it out.
Exactly.
Okay.
You have to decide in your mind, do you want to hire this man for an additional year, three years, five years, whatever.
And we're gonna come back here and we're gonna do what, in public?
Basically the same thing, it's just, uh, if you do it here, if you got a hundred questions, you're never gonna get to them all and it's gonna go on forever. But you can have a twenty-minute conversation and probably answer a lifetime of questions.
So it's almost gonna be like an interview, basically.
Well, it's, it's more like you're corresponding with him, you know, speaking with him with regard to certain things that you have an issue with. With regard to, you know, interviewing for qualifications, which you already know is qualifications.
Yeah, by the time it comes to the board, we're more or less, you know, pass or fail at that point.
So this, this, um, what did, what did you say, um, like an evaluation? This is an evaluation by each member of the council or is it us as a group?
Well, yeah, it's by each member, um, and, um, uh, like I said, I don't think we have time for it right now. It's, and they, they, they're usually very meaty and take a long time to, and they have to be.
Well, if each member of the council has to do one, I mean, how hard would it be to email it to us and we could get it ready?
Well, you would have to vote on it.
The evaluation?
You had to vote on the form, you had to vote on the questions, all that kinda jazz, it's better, I mean, a lot of towns do that on an annual basis.
Yes.
So every single year.
We don't have an evaluation on record that's already been approved by any boards?
Some city managers require it in their contract.
Oh, okay.
Some city managers require it in their contract, you know, so, I mean, that, because they wanna know how they're doing. And if you're not liking raising my, my, um, rate, then I wanna know why, tell me why.
Did Mark's contract require one?
Not, not that I recall, I, I, this is news to me, so I have not looked at his contract.
My head won my first year here, it's supposed to be at six months and I had it a year.
Yeah, I think basically that was, uh, at, at the time, the council was, you were on a trial basis. And, uh, this was to make that, you know, full-time, it ended up going way past what the council had originally said at the time. It ended up being a year, it's supposed to be at six months, you know, but.
So when we come back to the council, does the public get to ask Mark questions?
No, it's just, not, not, yes.
Just us?
Just that.
Well.
So if we've asked Mark all the questions privately behind doors, then you know, we're not gonna really have any to ask when we get back, right?
Yes, you wanted to ask what in public.
Right.
Well, that's right, and, and you're simply, you're gonna say what's gonna go into those slots, say, you know, annual rate. And, you know, these, these benefits and things like that, because I, I had to leave them blank.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
The, the top things that you're gonna be deciding at the meeting would be the pay scale, benefit scale, length of contract. And any other special terms that say they're requested by council or requested by Mark. Of which I don't.
And it's usually, um, his contract to get renewed every three years?
His last one was three years, um, since I've been here, I've sat through four city managers. And it's, everyone's been different, so.
Yeah, I've been through quite a few.
So we could determine the time of the link, the length of the contract, gotcha.
Correct, but, you know, keep in mind, this is a two-sided conversation, because you have the council wants X and the employee is gonna want whatever they want. So, you know, you, it's not one-sided, in other words.
Okay.
Do we understand?
I understand, I got a better understanding of what's going on.
Do you need any clarifications, uh, before our next meeting there, Jerry?
Uh, no, uh, I think I have a pretty good idea, if you want, uh, evaluation forms in the future, um, you know, I'm sure staff can get them. And I, I know that, um, Boeing Green has them and Zoff and Springs has them.
I think it's a good idea to do it annually, regardless.
And I think it's something you work with him on as to what the topics are and, and how the scoring's done and so on. Because, um, you know, obviously it's in his interest as well as yours to have the, have it properly done.
Yeah, if nothing else, it encourages each council member to actually sit down and think about, okay, what?
Right.
What happened this past year, what would I like to see this next year, um, gives him a global vision of how every council person is thinking. And he has an opportunity to do the same himself, so.
That's right, so somebody doesn't just drop a huge bomb on him and, you know, say, you know, oh, I wanna, I wanna move, that he be, you know, removed. And he hasn't even been told what's wrong.
We've seen that before happen.
Or if you give someone, you know, several years of, of glowing remarks and then all of a sudden you, you're throwing the book at them. Well, you know, it definitely raises the question of why, right?
Yep.
Or the mallet.
Throw the mallet, huh, alright, Mark, is that thing convoluted enough for you?
Perfectly clear.
Alright, anything else, uh, for the city manager report? Go ahead.
A couple of weeks ago, we were asked about being available for this meeting on, uh, Thursday to February twenty-third.
Okay.
Other, other than being asked, I don't know exactly what is involved with that meeting. And is there, whatever is gonna be involved, is there any way we can get a copy of that information sooner than later? Instead of getting it like the day before or the two days before, I mean, I don't know exactly what this meeting's for. I assume it, I was told it has something to do with fam, so I thought it was something to do with maybe a contract for them or a leasing agreement. So if we have an agreement, is there any reason why we can't get to that sooner than later?
Yes, well, you certainly get it a day before, it's, th- this is the one I, it was just sent to fam to look at, so when it comes back. And Jerry can probably cover it better because it's got some issues in it that we can't discuss. We, it's, it's, um, gotta be discussed in front of council, that's why I had the meeting, Jerry, if you wanna.
Right, yeah, it's a similar vein, uh, just talking about, you know, we, 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 you, you, as, um, attorneys. And, um, as, um, the financial expert that you have hired and so on, put together with kind of nuts and bolts of, of, of an agreement. But we, we can't negotiate price terms and, and, um, some of the intricacies of the agreement. That really are gonna require that you all give input as to, you know, what's gonna happen there. Because if we do it, then we have to do it in the sunshine, because we're actually bringing you a recommended, you know, um, terms of an agreement. And I, and I, I think it goes a little too far, so, um, you know, it, it may be more conservative than some. But, and, uh, I, I believe that it's well-founded. So you, you will basically be looking at some blank areas that you'll have to try and discuss with them in, in an open meeting.
Will they be present?
I assume so, yeah. And, and, and probably mass.
Okay, there's your answer, Jim.
So as soon as we get it back, Jim, we will, we will get it out to all council.
Okay, I just, uh, I just know that we've been doing this for like two years now and really haven't heard much discussion. Other than the fact that, uh, they were gonna lease the property, I did, I heard that the city was, wasn't really gonna get any money from it. Other than maybe money would go to the airport CRA. And the main benefit we were looking for was for them to, uh, bring businesses here, jobs, people paying taxes. Uh, and that, that not really high expectations from the city as far as the city making a profit for it. So that's why I was kinda curious exactly what's in this agreement, because I'd like to be able to know exactly which way the city's going. I don't like to be, have the council who's gonna vote on it, all of a sudden have the information given to us. And then we have to, uh, either, uh, make a decision or have to negotiate it. Because, uh, obviously it's been negotiated by everybody except for this council. And I don't, I, I don't necessarily think that that's correct, I think that's something that, uh, we should've been part of that. I mean, cause we're the ones that have to vote for it, so it sounds like it, the main four characters have already come up with a leasing agreement. To give to fam and they're gonna look at it and they're gonna make a decision before we even get a chance to look at it. I, I think it should've been the other way around, I think we should've had a chance to look at it and have us decide what we liked or disliked about the agreement. Were offered to them and, and then for us, the voting people up here to decide what the contract should look like and vote on it. And then offer it to them and see what they have to say, this seems like it's being reversed, it seems like we're the last ones to know. That the negotiations have been done, the leasing agreement has been written up, I don't have a copy of it. I mean, so it's kinda like, okay, so maybe one or two days before we've had this meeting, I'm gonna have a chance to look at it. And I didn't, I don't know, I just think that, uh, I, I mean, there's just so many people involved here. Uh, we got the city manager, we got the city attorney, we got Lowell Clary, we got, um, the attorney from Baynard. As that I think is, and maybe one or two other people.
But Jim, the, the reason for all that is because of the AIPP process, you know, that's ninety percent of the conversations they have is, is in regards to that. So obviously, a lot of this is gonna come down to, you know, fricking, there's probably ten pages of legal descriptions and all that kinda jazz. But it's legal mostly, but the council has to decide the dollar figures, which is really what matters, you know? And that's what it's gonna, that's, that's what we have to decide, they, they can't do that.
Yeah, I, I, I could care less about the legal agreements, except maybe terms of leases and so on and so forth.
And that's why they've done what they've done.
But, uh, okay, I will patiently wait and, uh, I'll meet with the city manager before the next city council meeting.
Just bear in mind, I mean, you can change as a council anything you want in there, not just the dollar amount. But this is for your, this is your opportunity to look at and say this, I don't agree with this. And, uh, you know, so whatever you wanna change is there, it's just that, you know, we, we put together a boilerplate basically for the work from in this. And, uh, that, and also a lot of the time was spent on the AIPP application as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of nuances in that.
I, I understand that, but, uh, like I've said before, uh, Mr. Lowell Clary said to me last year. That the agreement looked like it was a done deal, he thought it was a great deal and basically we should've been done by end of last year. Now, of course, I know we changed from the three P to AIPP, that's fine, he still said it was, it was a, a great opportunity. It was gonna be great for the city as well as great for them. And so, you know, and then the last thing I heard that, uh, we were supposed to have a meeting in February and supposedly by March. That they'll, they'll be up and leasing the airport and, uh, it just seems like it's, uh, coming pretty quick without having any advanced knowledge. Or notice other than two days early here it's gonna be. And I guess that's why we're having a special meeting, cause there could be multiple questions in there that I, I will or won't, won't be able to understand. So I'm just saying, I, I just think we should've been part of it beforehand, my opinion.
Think Mark, Lowell and Jerry probably tell you just about anything you wanna know, right?
I mean, if you wanna get copies of it, I mean, they're, it, it's, it's a public record, so.
It's a public record?
Absolutely.
Okay, can we get email copies to us tomorrow?
Yep, they all want it.
Yeah.
Want the draft where it is right now?
It's a draft, but drafts are public records, so.
Then, that way we have something to look at, compare and, and see if they, they're aware of what changes they make. We can at least know what the, you know, what, we start, where we started from. And then we can either agree or disagree what their changes are and agree or disagree with.
You know, they, the only I could say, that could say is, you know, if there's a lot of, you know, hoopla about it, you know, beforehand, it may jeopardize the AIPP. Because, I mean, the, the, um, I understand FAA is very schizy about how it's, how it does it. And, uh, you know, we, we're very careful not to throw any wrenches into it by the way we did it. But, you know, please, it's, it's, you know, if you wanna look at it, there's no reason why you can't look at it, your request is there.
What we would not want to do, Jim, is to get ahold of this lease and then make your own assumptions. And then try to contact them and try to have those conversations or sway before the council as a whole views it. Because the council as a whole is the only one that's gonna be able to do anything, that would be just adding fuel to the fire.
Okay, I promise you, once I get it, I will not discuss it with them.
Okay.
I will discuss it with myself.
Okay, that's perfectly fine, and Jesus, that's, that's ideal. Alright, anything else?
Nope.
I have two things for Mark.
Okay.
Mark, there's a pothole on the corner of Ernest East Sands in South Carolina. If somebody could please give me some attention. Um, and the second one is the vegetation. That runs along the railroad track. I have a lot of complaints, there's snakes and all kind of animals that they are having to deal with. Because I, if I'm right, this is the railroad responsibility, it's not.
Correct.
They're not doing the job, and if you go down there, you can see that they're not doing the job. Um, on Ernest East Sands, when you go under the underpass before going to Rainbow Bar, I think it's called some Alice Nelson. There's some bushes that's grown too, too wild there, that it, it could cause an accident. But alongside the railroad track, I mean, it could run for a mile or two. Can we get attention to that, can, can, can we get the railroad to put some attention on that?
If I can get ahold of somebody and ask them to do it, but I can't make them do it.
Can't make them do it?
No.
No. No.
It's there right away.
Yeah.
We, we deal with it all the time with them, they're not.
Yes, they're not easy to deal with.
No, they're not easy to deal with.
It was fifteen years just to make the.
But I will give it a try. I'll promise you that, but dealing with the railroad.
I, I've dealt.
So yeah, they're not required to maintain it, even though it could be hazardous at times to the, to traffic or, or people's homes, it's nasty.
Well, well, they should, yeah, but.
But the answer to that is no. You know, they're, they're totally separate from us. I, I researched this like four or five years ago, maybe, maybe longer. And um, there's nothing that we can do to make them do just about anything. Um, there is a director for this Southeast United States, um, for the um, um, the um, the organization that oversees it for the federal government, the, the railroads. And um, I, I can talk to him and he can get something from them, but you're probably far better off to talk to them directly and just, you know, you just take your hat in your hand as, as hard as that is and say, can you guys, can you really do something about that? Aren't you embarrassed by this? I mean, and of course, the answer is always no, but you know, um, but, but they, it is, we really had a really hard time with some areas that they had just grass and everything, debris. Everything else was just terrible. But we, we, I, you know, I, I think we finally got, got their attention because of the, that um, district guy. I'll see if I have that record of that, Mark, and see if I can find that information of that guy that I spoke with. And um, he says, well, you know, we, I, we do the best we can type thing.
Can you give that guy's name and number?
I, I, I'm gonna look it up and see if I still have it, you know, you know, um, I'm pretty sure I do, but I.
Problem with the railroad Pleasant, by the line, going over there. Main Street, they finally fixed halfway decent, but the one on Pleasant is just terrible.
Well, it, it's subject, you know, federal preemption.
Yeah.
And um, you know.
I'd be happy to make a call though.
All you can do is appeal to the federal government to, to regulate, cause they can.
These are the same people, still owe me income tax, it's two thousand seventeen, so what can I tell you? What do they say, you can't?
It's like the FAA, but far slower.
Mark will always tell you, you can't fight city hall, right?
It's terrible.
What's that?
You can't fight city hall.
You can probably fight city hall, but CSX, FAA.
You can't fight the government, that's for sure.
At city hall, you can come in and have your say, you can't even have your say with them, really.
Yep. All right, anything else for the good of the city?
Nope.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.